Good evening. Thank you. We're gonna go ahead and get started tonight. This is the regular city council meeting. It is Tuesday, November 7th, 2023, at 6:00 PM. And we are going to start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. So please rise and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now I'm gonna turn over the microphone to Chief of Police Blaine Hall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. I'm here to inform you tonight that yesterday there was a tragedy at the Montrose County Sheriff's Office. Rick Mayer, who's a Corrections Deputy and Law Enforcement Officer, suddenly died while on duty. Rick was a 16-year veteran of the Montrose County Sheriff's Office. He was an incredible man, a man of God, and truly a servant of our community. And so, Madam Mayor, I appreciate you asking me to lead a moment of silence tonight. So if everyone could bow their heads in honor of Rick. Thank you, everyone. And thank you, Madam Mayor, for allowing me to do this tonight.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask the city clerk to take roll call, please.
Barbara Beinum.
Present.
Jay David Reed.
Present.
Dave Frank.
Present.
Doug Glaspel.
Present.
Ed Yuliberry.
Here.
All city councilors are present.
Thank you very much. Mayor Protim Reed, are there any changes to the agenda tonight?
No, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. We usually start meetings where we have a proclamation by reading the proclamation. Is there anyone from the Montrose Community Foundation here yet? I think they're coming, and I'd love to be able to present the proclamation to them. So I'm actually gonna hold off and circle back to the proclamation should they come in the door. So we'll come back to the proclamation that is honoring Colorado Gives and Compadre Gives Day, and we'll continue on with the agenda. Item 7 tonight is a call for public comment for non-agenda items. Is there anyone who's here for an item that isn't on the agenda who would like to speak to council? Okay, I think everyone who's here is here for a specific agenda item. And as per our usual procedure, for each item tonight, we will have a public comment period. So those of you who are here, when we get to your item, I'll make sure that you have time to address council. Our city attorney couldn't be here tonight, so we're not acknowledging him. Okay, so item 8 is approval of minutes, and that's council consideration of the minutes from October 17th, 2023.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the October 17th, 2023 regular city council meeting as presented.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Please vote on the minutes electronically, and then the results of those votes do appear on the screen so everyone can follow along with what council's doing. And the minutes pass unanimously. And yes, we did skip over item 6, which was to thank our outgoing city attorney, but he wasn't able to be here tonight. So we're gonna wait and do that in person with him tomorrow. Item 9 is new fermented malt beverage and wine license application. And this is council consideration of an application for a new fermented malt beverage and wine license at 113 West Main Street for SNF Market LLC doing business as El Patron Mexican Grocery Beer Wine and Smoke Shop for consumption off of the licensed premises. And I will turn this over to our Assistant City Attorney, Chris Dowsey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of city council. Before city council is an application for a new retail fermented malt beverage and wine license. This is for El Patron Mexican Grocery Beer Wine Smoke Shop located at 113 West Main Street. This is a public hearing for the new retail fermented malt beverage and wine license. The permit is in order, and the fees have been paid. From city staff's review of the application, we have seen nothing that would prevent council from transferring this license, or approving this license, notwithstanding this hearing. As a reminder, council can make a decision at the end of this hearing or defer for up to 30 days. At this time, I will ask the applicant to step forward and introduce themselves to the council and announce their address or general location in the city.
Good evening, Mayor and everyone. Thank you for having me this evening again. And yeah, my name is Sopano. I'm the owner of the Poorhouse Liquor Store. And then this time, we're trying to apply for the beer license for the old location of the Palace Liquor that they just moved. It's gonna be at 113 West Main Street. We're gonna have some beer and wine and Mexican grocery plus some smoke shop product. Yes.
Perfect. Madam Mayor, do you and the councilors wish to examine the petitioner at this time? Or would you like me to ask the preliminary questions?
We would like you to ask those preliminary questions, please.
Thank you. So could you just tell us about, a little more about El Patron?
The business, the concept of the business?
Yeah, just generally, what's the business going to have inside? If I'm a patron, what can I get?
Yeah, so what we're gonna do is, I think maybe, I think 20% of the business we're going to put beer and wine, maybe wine. 5%, I think, we don't know because it's kind of difficult for us with the grocery right now. So we don't know how many percent, but I think 20, 25% of the business is gonna be beer and wine and 40, maybe, for the Mexican grocery. And the rest is kind of smoke shop. That's what we're planning for.
Perfect.
And then for the employee, if they have a class again for the training on alcohol, beverage, and we're gonna send them again. If you have new employee, they don't know.
About that. Sure. So state law requires that the needs and desires of the neighborhood be considered during this hearing. We've determined the neighborhood of this to be, Salu, to be the city of Montrose. Do you understand the neighborhood designation?
Yeah.
Do you agree with it?
Say one with them.
Do you agree with this designation?
Yeah.
Do you believe the needs and desires of the neighborhood are currently being met? Or that there needs to be at least one more license?
They happy and they want us to come back. And we have more than the signature that the city require. I have more in my backpacks.
Sure, yeah, so I'll go right on to that. There were 110 signatures submitted for the petition. However, 90 of the signatures were determined to be insufficient. A little over half of those were because of the citizens were outside of city limits. 26 provided insufficient addresses. Five failed to indicate the age of the signer, and so on and so forth. So 20 of the signatures were determined to be valid and in support of this license. With that, since there were so many that were insufficient, what was the process for the petition? How did you get all these signatures?
The process and all the signature, how do we get that?
Yes.
Your question, yeah. We talked to most of the customer that they used to come to the location. And then for the new location that we, I think, not the new location, Poorhouse. So people who go to Poorhouse, we check with them too and ask them if they like and want us to come back. And a lot of them, they don't wanna go to Poorhouse, even though if they are in the middle, they said they just like Old Westman. That is convenient for them. It's easy to walk, it's a small store. Sometimes not everyone wanna go to a big store. It's convenient for them. So a lot of people going to other store doesn't mean they wanna go, but they have no choice.
Right.
We still have a lot of customer want us to come back. Yeah.
Okay, perfect. So obviously, you own the Poorhouse. Have you had any infractions with the Poorhouse?
I'm sorry?
Have you had any infractions at the Poorhouse? Any liquor license infractions?
Any problems?
Violations of the liquor license?
Problems, the police?
We never have any problem up there, yeah. So far since we've been doing the business.
Okay, perfect. So...
But the only problem we have is just when the grocery put a lot of wine and beer, there is a problem we have. The sale of the wine that we have is dropped. Some category of wine is up to 60% and some 40%, something like that. That is issue we have, other than that is not.
Sure, but no issues with law enforcement, correct?
Just about a sale drop, that's it.
But no issues with law enforcement, correct?
No, no, everything else is good, yeah.
Perfect. So obviously, you were stating that about the liquor law and education training. Have you taken that?
Yeah.
Okay. And all of your current employees, have they taken this class as well?
Yeah, we have like maybe one or two more employee that they don't take a class yet. But if the city have, we willing to send them to take a class.
Okay, perfect. Well, that answers all my questions, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I'm gonna follow up on the question about the petition. So that's a lot of signatures on the petition that don't count. The people that signed it don't live in Montrose, or they didn't complete the information. So you, that, so I think the reason the attorney was asking you how you collected those signatures is because so many people who signed it aren't allowed to sign it. And we want to make sure that your process for checking IDs to make sure people are 21 is a better process.
Yes, yeah.
Because the petition process had a lot of problems. A lot of people shouldn't have signed it.
Yeah.
That's okay.
Yeah.
It's okay. Sometimes people sign it, they don't know if they live in the city or out of the city.
Yeah.
And so I think that's why he was asking you,
Yeah.
are you gonna do a better job of checking IDs than you did of getting signatures?
Yeah, ID normally we check that too because we don't, because liquor store we serve to the customer who is older than 21. Yeah.
And how do you know they're older than 21?
We, most of them, they are regular customer. And some of them who look older than 60, that, how we do.
What's your system for checking their driver's license? Do you have a...
We don't have the driver license, but we just do a reflection. And then some of them, like we have a lot of customer recently who using the app, of the Colorado app.
Uh huh.
Yeah, and then we go through that also.
It's easier to see, isn't it? The birthday on the app?
Yeah, yeah, I see that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions from my fellow councilors about this liquor license application?
Okay, it doesn't look like we have more questions for the applicant at this time. So you are done questioning, I can go on with the hearing?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm officially gonna open a public hearing. We do this for every liquor license.
Yes.
So this is the opportunity for anyone from the public who wants to talk to council and say they're in support or they aren't in support of this license.
Yes.
I don't think anyone's here to speak either way, but I have to ask, is anyone here to make a public comment about this liquor license? I don't see anyone, so I'll close the hearing. And I would consider a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve a new fermented malt beverage and wine license at 113 West Main Street for SNF Market LLC doing business as El Patron Mexican Grocery Beer Wine and Smoke Shop for consumption off of the licensed premises.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a first and a second, so if everyone could please vote. And make sure you hit save. If it's down there, you might have to scroll. Are we still waiting for somebody? Okay, we're voting again. It didn't work, so she cleared it out. So everyone, please vote again. Make sure you vote and then hit save. We might have to go to a voice vote. Why don't you call a voice vote?
Thank you. Barbara Beinum.
Yes.
Jay David Reed.
Yes.
Dave Frank.
Yes.
Doug Glaspel.
Yes.
Ed Yuliberry.
Yes.
We have unanimous vote.
Congratulations. The city council is approving the liquor license.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Let's all take a second to close, not to, how about this? Should we all try closing out of the meeting and then rejoining the meeting? With your computer? Okay, then we'll just all keep going on our computers. Okay, next item on our agenda tonight is item 10, which is the Osprey Edition Annexation. And the city council will hold a hearing on the annexation of the Osprey Edition. Our city planner, William Reese, is gonna talk us through the whole Osprey Edition. And then there are multiple parts. There is a resolution on which we will hold public comment and vote. And then there's an ordinance, which is a first reading, and we'll hold a hearing, and then we'll vote. So we'll do two different votes, but the presentation will be for the whole piece. So I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, and good evening, Madam Mayor and members of city council. I do have a brief presentation to share. It'll likely take us, as usual, the planning department takes us some time to get this up on a screen here. But as you stated, this is for the Osprey Edition Annexation. This did come before you as already during work session and during the resolution set a hearing to date. Tonight is the official hearing date for that annexation. We did previously bring this to the Planning Commission for the recommendation of zoning on October 25th. And then we do plan to bring this to you for a second reading on November 14th. The Osprey Edition is a proposed annexation of 9.53 acres. The property is within the city's urban growth boundary and both the city's sewer and water service areas. The area is urbanizing and 100% of the perimeter borders existing city limits. The property is currently a county enclave, which is wholly surrounded by the city. The zoning of the surrounding area is B2 Highway Commercial District to the west, some B2, R2 Low Density District, and R3A Medium High Density District to the south, R3A to the east, and R4 High Density District to the north. This map here shows the proposed zoning for the annexation. There is a very small sliver of right-of-way, which is too small to see on here. That would be zoned R3A, and that's just to match the rest of the right-of-way. That is about 0.16 acres in size. The western portion of the property is proposed to be zoned P Public District, which is about 5.39 acres. And the eastern side would be zoned R4 High Density District, or about 3.98 acres. The P Public District is intended to provide for uses and services of a public nonprofit or charitable nature. And the R4 District is intended to provide for high-density, multiple-family residences and to allow a variety in housing types. This map that you see here is an approximation just to show the proposed zoning overlaid with the existing surrounding zoning. This slide does show a zoning exhibit, which shows the exact legal description of where the proposed zoning would be delineated. We are also working on a minor subdivision plat that would be recorded after the property is annexed. We can't technically record that right now since the property is not in city limits yet. But we would record that, assuming the property is annexed. The property lines on that subdivision plat would follow exactly with these lines here, so we would not have a split-zoned property, or rather, it would only be split-zoned for a short time. The western portion would be planned for the new All Points Transit Facility, and the eastern portion would be ideally some multifamily housing. Given the proximity to the proposed public transit facility, this would be a great place for high-density housing. In the planning world, we do call that transit-oriented development. It's also near existing commercial development adjacent to multifamily development, and this is an urbanizing corridor that is ripe for high-density housing. This map shows the annexation plat and also contains a legal description of the property being annexed. As mentioned, 100% of the property borders existing city limits, so this annexation would eliminate an existing enclave. According to our future land use map, within our comprehensive plan, this area is listed as residential mixed density low, which suggests the area is appropriate for residential development, primarily single-family with some attached developments such as duplexes or townhomes. The property is also within Growth Area 1, which represents the most cost-efficient areas for the city to grow and represents areas where there's existing infrastructure that can accommodate high-density residential or commercial development. We also find that the proposed zoning would meet several of the goals outlined in our comprehensive plan, especially Goal 5 within our land use chapter. The comp plan suggests the promotion of higher-density infill and redevelopment. And this is probably one of the best examples of infill development that you could find here in Montrose. We do strive to promote higher-density development in infill sites, especially in areas easily accessed by foot, like and/or public transit. In our housing goals, we encourage a mix of housing types, including multifamily and a variety of housing densities. Of course, we also just went through our housing needs assessment, and the proposed high-density zoning would help to alleviate some of those housing needs. Goal 2 encourages an increased access to affordable housing, providing choices for residents of all incomes and ages. In summary, the area is urbanizing, and the property meets both state and local annexation requirements. An annexation agreement has been signed by the applicant. We do find that the proposal is consistent with the public health, safety, and welfare and the comprehensive plan. We did bring this to the Planning Commission for their zoning recommendation on October 25th, and they made a unanimous recommendation to approve the proposed zoning. We do recommend approval of Resolution 2023-23 and ordinances 2647 and 2648. And that concludes my presentation. I believe Scott has some things he'd like to share.
Thank you, Will. See, it's easy. So at the Planning Commission, I spent quite a bit of time going through the, all the various aspects of the overall roundabout project, planning, the zoning, all the pieces, long-range transportation planning. I won't go into that here, where you guys did the development agreement. We've kinda gone into that already. But I will reference, I guess, for anybody looking from the public, the previous meeting videos from the most recent Planning Commission and even this development agreement that kinda set up the roundabout project overall. But I would like to introduce some guests. We're joined here tonight by some members of the All Points Transit Board. So that's John Nelson and David Keenholz, and then their new executive director, Gary Clark. And then on the back, if Dean McCaffrey, that name sounds familiar, he was the owner. He's the one that we entered into the development agreement to make all of this a reality. So thanks for being here, Dean. I think with that, I'll just project some of the latest kind of footprints and concepts from All Points, which kinda play into the public zoning pieces of it. So to kinda help orient everybody. This is Walgreens here on the left side. You got a vacant lot that's part of Dean's overall development. And then the All Points site here, which is the piece being zoned P. It's just exciting when we get cool drawings and rendering, so I think I'll just project that and leave that up in case they come up and wanna speak to it. So I think that's all I had to add at this point.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so we are first going to address the annexation piece of this property, and then we'll address the zoning piece. And the annexation piece is two pieces. At first, it starts with a resolution, which is Resolution 2023-23, which is consideration of a resolution, which is the findings of fact for the Osprey Edition. Is there any public comment for the findings of fact portion? Seeing none, we could have a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution 2023-23 as presented.
City.
Okay, we have a first and two seconds. Please go ahead and vote. We'll see if it works better this time. And it does work better, and that passes unanimously, which leads us to the second piece of the annexation, which is Ordinance 2647, first reading. And that is consideration of an ordinance on first reading for the annexation of the Osprey Edition. And with this, we'll hold an official hearing. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll close the hearing and entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to pass Ordinance 2647 on first reading as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Is there a question on the ordinance number?
I'm just checking it to make sure. I think we're okay.
Okay. So now we're gonna move on to Ordinance 2648, first reading. And this is for the zoning, so I'll read this. This is council consideration of Ordinance 2648 on first reading, which is an ordinance providing for the zoning of the Osprey Edition as P Public District, R4 High Density District, and R3A Medium High Density District. We've heard the staff presentation about the zoning with some additional information and maps from our city engineer. And so, does council have any questions? Okay, I'll go ahead and hold a hearing. Is there any public comment on the ordinance providing for the zoning? Seeing none, I'll close the hearing and entertain a motion.
I move to pass Ordinance 2648 on first reading as presented.
Second.
Great, we have a first and a second. Please go ahead and vote.
I'll have to get you a mouse. It makes it so much easier.
And that zoning ordinance passes unanimously. So that is that piece of parcel. Now we're gonna move on to another piece of parcel, which is item 12, and that's the Bluff Harbor Lot Edition Annexation. And we are going to hear from our city planner, William Reese, again.
Thank you again. I could ask Scott to disconnect.
Yeah. Did I not make that clear?
Oh, it's a totally separate piece of land. Oh, a separate piece of land, a different parcel. Same process, different piece of land.
Yes, that's correct. This is a separate annexation. The Bluff Harbor Lot Edition Annexation largely follows the same schedule as the previous annexation. We did originally bring this to you as the Palante Edition. The ownership did change hands, and this is now being called the Bluff Harbor Lot Edition. But everything else about the application has remained consistent. This is a proposed 0.72-acre annexation located along Juniper Road. It falls within the city's urban growth boundary and the city sewer service area, but within the Menoken Water Service Area. The property does meet state and city annexation requirements. The city, the property is surrounded on three sides by MHR Manufactured Housing Residential District, and the fourth side is outside of city limits. The applicants have requested MHR in order to match the surrounding zoning. This is intended to provide a suitable environment for single-family conventional and mobile homes and is designed to allow a high density of single-family residences and related uses. Here is the annexation plat. As mentioned, three sides of the property are already within city limits, so this easily meets the 1/6 perimeter requirement. According to our land use chapter in the comprehensive plan, this property is technically designated as employment center, which would suggest it's appropriate for commercial and some industrial uses. However, the surrounding area is all residential, so the applicant's request of a residential zoning district is appropriate. The property is within Growth Area 1, again representing the most cost-efficient areas for the city to grow. And so, in summary, the property meets our annexation requirements, and the applicant has signed an annexation agreement. The proposal is consistent with the public health, safety, and welfare annexation policy and the comprehensive plan. We brought this to the Planning Commission on October 25th, where they made a unanimous recommendation of approval for the MHR zoning. City staff recommends approval of Resolution 2023-24, Ordinance 2649, and Ordinance 2650. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for William on this piece of property?
Okay, so this is the same process. If anyone's following along, we'll have a resolution and then an ordinance for the annexation piece. And then we'll have a separate ordinance for the zoning piece. So Resolution 2023-24 is the findings of fact for the Bluff Harbor Lot Edition. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, would someone make a motion?
I'll make a motion for Resolution 2023-24, finding of fact for Bluff Harbor Lot Edition. I'll make a motion for Resolution 2023-24, finding of fact for Bluff Harbor Lot Addition.
And would someone second that?
Second.
And we have a second, please go ahead and vote. And that passes unanimously, which takes us to the Ordinance 2649 on first reading, which is consideration of an ordinance for the annexation of the Bluff Harbor Lot Addition, for which I'll hold a hearing. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll close the hearing. And would someone please make a motion?
I move to pass Ordinance 2649 on first reading as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you. And that passes unanimously. So now that we've annexed this property into the city, the next thing we do is, is we designate the zoning. And we do that through the ordinance process. So Ordinance 2650 on first reading is an ordinance providing for the zoning of the Bluff Harbor Lot Addition as an MHR Manufactured Housing Residential District. And I will hold a hearing. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll close the hearing, and we'll have a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt Ordinance 2650 on first reading as presented. Second.
Thank you. And that passes unanimously as well. Thank you very much. And all of these first readings do come back to council for a second reading before they're finalized. It's after two readings and two votes that an ordinance is final. Okay, Item 14 on our agenda is Ordinance 2645. This is council consideration of an ordinance, providing and appropriating funds for defraying the expenses and liabilities of the City of Montrose, Colorado during the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2024, which is all to say this is when we formally pass the budget. And it does take two readings because we pass it by ordinance. So I'll turn it over to our finance director to tell us a little more. We've been working on this since the spring, so.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. Yes, we have. It's been quite the year. I can't believe it's already the end of 2023. So yes, tonight, interview is an ordinance for the first reading, Ordinance 2645 of the 2024 budget. I do have a presentation that you all have seen a couple of times, but for sure, the open house on October 17th. I'd be happy to share that again if you would like for.
I think in the spirit of transparency and sharing information with the public, even though we're all very familiar with it, it would be great if you went through.
Absolutely.
Budget presentation.
Okay, let me get my computer. Okay, so the 2024 budget, we have worked really hard on this, on this budget. It is $103,993,44. That does include transfers. So basically, this proposed budget has been created with a lot of work from you all, from the city manager's office, all the department heads, supervisors, even our staff level has a little hand in developing this budget. So with that being said, during October, we heard a presentation from the ETC group on our community survey, and I want to reiterate that our budget processes, our budget decisions over the last several years have been in line with what we see in that community survey. One of the biggest top-three increases from 2016 was in our transit, so being able to go from one end of town to the other end of town. And Scott, he left the room, but he has been working really hard to get our roundabouts in, to get our, you know, Woodgate connection in, get our Hillcrest connection in, so lots of things that help keep the traffic off of Main Street and Townsend. So just kind of a little plug there. We definitely are listening to the public, and we're listening to you all. So with that being said, the budget process starts in early spring. This year, April 17th, we met as a group, city council, department heads, and we talked about big-picture projects, big picture, what did we want to see in 2024? So we took that all into consideration. Then in July, after department heads and supervisors reviewed and crunched numbers, we reviewed every line item as a department head city manager group the week of July 31st. Then in September, after we did a lot of negotiating, played a little bit of budget bingo, we came up with a proposed budget, and we met with you on September 7th to review some of those big-picture items. And we had a meeting all day, so it was a very productive meeting. And then by October 15th, per the charter, we gave you a proposed budget, and we need a public hearing by the middle of November. We're going to have two before November 15th, and then the budget ordinance is required to be approved 30 days prior to the beginning of the fiscal year. So this is basically a slide that kind of gives our, our historical perspective. The P in the column for 2023 is projected, so that's actually after we pass the budget for 2023. Then things come up, things happen, we get grants, those types of things, and those projections change. So that's a projected 2023, that's not the approved budget for 2023. And then the budget for 2024 is in that last column at $103,993,44. And that includes transfers. The graph below that does not include transfers, so just kind of a pictorial view of our budget. I like this slide because it shows that, yes, you're approving $103 million in appropriation, but there are several buckets of money. It's not all general fund money, it's not all going to be spent on one thing. We do a lot of different things here at the city. So the general fund, $36 million. Public Safety Fund, $15 million. The Office of Business and Tourism, just about $2 million will be spent, and that's money that's collected directly from the sales tax. There's an excise tax on that, and it's spent on tourism and downtown promotion of businesses. We've got several special revenue funds. We've got a capital improvement fund, which we generally transfer most of that out of the general fund into the capital improvement fund, but per GASB, they like to see those separately, so not in one fund. And then we've got several enterprise funds. We've got the Water Fund, the Sewer Fund, Trash and Recycling Fund, and then our Black Canyon Golf Course is a quasi-enterprise fund. It's not enterprise by Tabor definition, but it does collect half of its revenue from users. Internal Service Funds, we've got several of those. We've got our Fleet Management Fund, our Information Services Fund, our Facilities Fund, and then our Health and Dental Self-Insurance Fund. So four of those, and then we've got our Debt Service, which we have very little, but we do have the Public Safety Debt Service for the construction of the new building. And then we've got a loan out for the infrastructure one we did in 2017. So we, so we have several funds, we've got lots of different funding sources, and we spend it on lots of different things, so it's not all one pot of money. Jumping into capital, this is some of the more interesting parts of the budget. We've got the Niagara Hillcrest Roundabout, which is one of our largest projects in 2024 of $2 million, and it relates directly to that Osprey addition that you all just approved. So with that roundabout, that will make that transit a lot smoother. Woodgate East Oak Grove Roundabout at $1 million. Street Infrastructure, MoveMo.co, that was adopted in 2017, and it's been, we've been using that to do lots of street maintenance, sidewalk maintenance throughout the, throughout the entire city of Montrose. West Main Revitalization, $150,000. That project's been a bit slow to get off the ground, but it's moving forward. The Ogden Road frontage improvements of $400,000. South First and Cascade Street improvement of $50,000. Then every year, we appropriate for sidewalk and ADA compliance, $100,000. Flashing crosswalks, we've installed a few of these over the years as well to hopefully make our pedestrian travel safer. We've got some money in the budget to help out the Magic Circle Theater with their improvements. And then tributary street extension and Odell and Lotzenheiser Bridge project. So we're going to be really busy in 2024, as we have been in the past.
Can I just, can you see on that slide?
Yeah, absolutely.
For a second, I just want to make sure folks understand on the Magic Circle Theater part that that CGS means curb, gutter, and sidewalk. So it's the public infrastructure in front of their building. We aren't redoing the inside of their building or anything like that.
Correct, correct. It was just a really good time to, to put some funds towards that sidewalk. It's an old sidewalk, while they're doing some parking lot revitalization. Capital facility improvements, we've got the City Hall facade project that we're going to implement in 2024. Hopefully, that will be a short-lived project, not a, you know, nine-month project. We're working on the timeline for that. The public workshop design, $550,000. Sorry, I didn't go over these slides very well, but that's pretty much the, the large capital we have. We do have some little capital in the general fund. Parks and streets have a few little things. Just jumping to the Water Fund, I want to go over these funds specifically because we are increasing rates in 2024, but proposed expenditures for the Water Fund in 2024 is $8.7 million. Capital projects here as well, Scott does do a lot of the management of these projects, but they are funded out of the Water Fund. And the Water Fund is an enterprise fund that receives its revenues from users. It's not general fund monies. So we've got several projects there. A lot of them go along with the street capital projects. Here's just a pictorial of what we project revenues, expenditures, capital to look like over the next couple of years. And you can see there where to, to maintain a healthy fund and to be able to address any issues that come up, we're looking for a 5% increase to our charges for water, and then a 5% plus a 50 cents per 1,000 gallons for usage of water, and that is to pass, the 50 cents is passed through to Project 7 for their project south of town. So there's that slide that talks about the fee increases. A residential customer will see an increase of about a dollar in the base fee and 69 cents per 1,000 gallons used. In the Sewer Fund, we have a proposed budget of $6 million. Capital projects here, there's a few more than the water, but it just depends on what we think might need to be fixed underground while we're doing like tributary street or the MoveMo projects. Niagara Hillcrest Roundabout, that's going to be a big one. I just want to make sure that we don't have to go back in a few years and dig up those streets that we've just fixed. Here's that picture for the Sewer Fund. And you can see on that one, the cash position in 2026 is actually projected to go down. That's all dependent on capital projects is really driving that, so we will make sure that we don't overextend the Sewer Fund. But we do need to increase fees again here, mainly because of state and federal mandates with the wastewater treatment plant, but also those capital projects are very important. Proposed rate increase here is 5%, residential increase of about $1.23 per month. Trash and recycling is another one of our enterprise funds. Proposed budget for 2024 is $2.7 million. Here we are proposing an increase of 20%, which is, was part of a survey that we did at the beginning of the year. We were very concerned about our trash and recycling and, and how it was growing, and how we needed to figure out if we were going to continue down this path or we were going to change paths. So there was a survey went out, we got very good response from that survey, and it was overwhelmingly a 20% increase was, and let's keep the services the same. So that's what we did. A new rate for residential at $21.95 a month, which is a $3.66 increase per month. And the Trash and Recycle Fund, if you've been following us for a while, this is kind of how our Trash and Recycle Fund has looked for several years. We've made, you know, different decisions throughout the years. I know when we went to Trash and Recycling, we bought all the containers, kind of dipped into reserves, and brought it back up, and here we are again, having a little bit of an issue with trash trucks and, and finding those and sourcing those, and the cost of those have just gone up in the last two or three years, so. With that, I guess that's all I have to say. I will entertain any questions or go back to any slides. If there's a clarification anybody needs, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you very much. I know we have all heard it a lot, but I, I don't think we can share it enough with our public so that they can see, and I think if nothing else, perhaps pique their curiosity enough to follow up with you and ask a specific question, because I know you're available anytime to talk to members of the public about the budget. That being said, I think for our second reading, which is just next Tuesday night, we don't need to do the whole presentation, but can refer back to this presentation for anyone who wants to see it next week.
Absolutely.
Okay, so we will have a hearing for the first reading of, oh, are there any questions from council? Sorry, I just assumed, we've talked about it so much, that if you had a question, you would have asked it by now. Okay, opening hearing. Are there any public who'd like to talk about the budget? Seeing none, I'll close the hearing.
I move to pass Ordinance 2645 on first reading as presented.
Second.
Thank you for that first and second. Please vote.
Madam Mayor?
Uh-huh.
May I make a comment? Some questions came up for me on this budget process, and I believe it could be all resumed. We'll solve it from my point of view by meeting with the city manager and the finance director here next year, so at this current time, I either can support the budget or my question is can I abstain from voting at this time?
You cannot abstain from voting at this time. You can ask to have the whole thing tabled. We'd have to call a special meeting, I think, in order to get the budget read by, by our requirement. This is why we sat and looked at the calendar a few months ago to make sure we had enough meetings to approve the budget. So I think, and I'm going to mask our city attorney who's sitting here tonight, I believe that you need to vote or we need to not vote. You need to, you need to vote on the budget, because there's been a motion, a second, and you don't have a conflict of interest, so you have to vote. Any thoughts from our city manager or our city attorney?
I would just, head nodding with Cheney, he can ask his questions now, and we can try to answer him as part of the discussion, and that might resolve the issue, and he feels comfortable voting tonight.
Well, I had a short conversation with the finance director, and I really feel that if we were to get together in your office for how long it takes for me to understand some questions that I have.
That just came up, I think that would probably be the most appropriate way to handle this.
I, I would agree with the mayor. I, I think you have to vote. You don't have a conflict.
Well, I'll vote then. I mean, I have a problem with that, but I'm just not sure that I can support the budget at this time. Does it have to be unanimous?
It does not have to be unanimous. You know, we strive for that. That's one of the reasons we talk about the budget for hours and hours and hours. It's one of the reasons that staff tells us to come and see them anytime they have questions. I guess that is for us. I guess I was frustrated that we have a council member who didn't take the time to get their questions answered before tonight. That's frustrating.
This is how I prefer to do it, if you don't want.
Absolutely. So I, we have a first and a second. Everyone, please vote. Okay, budget on first reading passes four to one. There will be a second reading a week from tonight to approve the budget for 2024. Okay, moving on to resolution twenty-two-three dash twenty-one. This is council consideration of a resolution repealing and replacing chapters three dash one dash one, three dash one dash two, and three dash one dash three of the City of Montrose Regulations Manual and adopting the 2024 fee schedule. I'll turn this over to our city clerk, Lisa Del Piccolo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The proposed fee schedule for 2024 was a group effort on the part of the leadership team. And we did include an overview in the meeting packet. I can give a general overview if you'd like. Otherwise, there is a red line revision in the meeting packet. And the final version is included with the resolution as exhibit A.
Thank you very much. Those meeting packets are available to the public. So council, what do you think in terms of her going over those, that fee schedule tonight? Or referring folks to look at the packet to see?
I'm comfortable with referring people to the packet because it's easily available. And it's so in-depth on each individual item that we could bind ourselves up for an extra forty-five minutes.
Okay.
On something that they can easily find on.
May I make one comment?
Yes, please.
There have been no changes since the work session discussion, except that we added code references in the right-hand column in the final version. But there have been no changes to the fees since the work session.
I think that's really helpful. So if folks wanted to listen to you explain each one, they could reference the work session that was reported from two weeks, two weeks ago?
October seventeenth.
October seventeenth, work session would have the detailed information. Okay.
Sorry, October sixteenth, sorry about that.
October sixteenth, work session. Thank you. So that would be the detailed information in addition to what's in the packet. So I will accept public comment on this item. Is there any comment? Okay, seeing none, then I would consider a motion.
Move to adopt resolution twenty-two-three dash twenty-one as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you. And that passes unanimously. Okay, next item on our agenda, item sixteen is ordinance twenty-six forty-three. This is a second reading. So this is an ordinance of this city adding new sections five, six, and seven to Title One, Chapter Nine of the Official Code of the City of Montrose concerning campaign finance regulations for the City of Montrose municipal elections. I will turn it over to our city attorney, Chris Dowsey, and our city clerk, Lisa Del Piccolo, if they have any additional information to add, if anything specifically has changed since first reading.
Thank you, Madam, excuse me. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. This is the second reading of this ordinance. The impetus of this was that the state had changed the laws to where they put a cap on campaign finance for everyone running for the municipal elections. We have opted out of those caps and just going with the way we've been doing it. The additional codification is really just codifying what we do already. There's no changes as to what we've been doing in the past. Additionally, there have been no changes since first reading.
Thank you very much. And then from the city clerk's point of view, the one thing we did put into our ordinance was a procedure for folks to file a complaint about campaign finance and how that would look if they did that.
Exactly. We just formalized a procedure.
Thank you very much. Okay, any public comment on this ordinance? Okay, seeing none. Council, first off, I'm sorry, does council have any questions? Thank you. Then we could do a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-six forty-three on the second reading as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Moving on to item seventeen, ordinance twenty-six forty-four on second reading. This is council consideration of an ordinance repealing and replacing Title Six, Chapter One, Section Twenty-One, six dash one dash twenty-one regarding unreasonable noise. And this is a second reading, but I'll turn it over to our assistant city attorney, Matt Magliaro, to remind folks what this ordinance is doing.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. I'm here on a propose, proposal to change the unreasonable noise ordinance, specifically one section. The only change would be to subsection D of that ordinance, which sets forth an evidentiary presumption. The quarter fact finder can take it that the sound is unreasonable if sound is broadcast under certain conditions from a motor vehicle. The changes be strike similar and replace it with emitted from any to broaden the type of equipment beyond the sound system of speakers that cause unreasonable noise and hopefully to aid successful prosecutions of the ordinance itself. There have been no changes since the presentation and discussion at the work session held October second and the regular session first reading on October seventeenth. Both were recorded for the public. The proposal appears on pages ninety-five through ninety-seven of tonight's packet. And with that, since we've discussed it in some depth, I'll take any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? Okay, then I might officially open a hearing. Any public comment? Seeing none. Close the hearing and entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance twenty-six forty-four on second reading as presented.
Second.
Thank you. And that was supposed to be public comment, not a hearing, but it doesn't matter. Okay. And that passes unanimously. So item eighteen is ordinance twenty-six forty-six on first reading. And this is an ordinance amending section eleven dash seven dash twelve of the Official Code of the City of Montrose concerning the zoning of new additions to the city and rezoning parcels already in the city limits. And I'll turn it over to our planning manager, Jase Hoplow.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. I don't have a presentation this evening. What we have is a code amendment to section eleven, seven, twelve of our land development regulations. And as you mentioned, this is specific to rezoning and zoning of additions or newly annexed property within the city limits. A summary of this proposal was discussed at the last work session meeting, which was on October sixteenth. So I'll keep the discussion fairly brief tonight. Just to clarify for anyone listening online, the general process for rezoning property within city limits is as follows. Step one is the applicant would propose a new zoning designation after discussions with city staff. And that request would go to a hearing in front of the planning commission. Step two would be that the planning commission either recommends approval or denial of the applicant's requested zoning district. That recommendation would move forward, forward to city council. And then the city council would hold a hearing on the rezone request made by the applicant and either ratify the decision of planning commission or reverse it. And then the last step is that if a change in zoning is approved, rezoning ordinance would be signed into effect. So as our code reads now, it doesn't, it reads a little odd. And what we're doing here is just simply clarifying the process. So again, this is actually shown in the red line document attached as exhibit A. One more addition here just to mention is that staff is proposing to amend the wording of eleven dash seven dash twelve, subsection A three, just to clarify conditions. So there was approved rezones in the past. I've actually brought them forth to you in the past that had specific conditions set forth within the zoning ordinance. It's just generally bad practice to do that because the zoning ordinance doesn't typically track with the title. So this can add confusion to property owners. It can add confusion to staff. So really what we're reflecting in that change is eliminating just ad hoc conditions. So we're removing that. And then lastly, just mentioning as far as newly annexed properties, what we're doing with that is just clarifying this process. So the rezone process and the initial zoning process are actually the same. And we're just making sure that it reflects that within our code. There's just some ambiguity there that exists and we want that to be eliminated. So that's really what we're looking at. A more detailed explanation is probably better served in that October sixteenth meeting. But all of this is attached within the packet and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Just when we're getting the hang of it from our side of the seat and we're voting, is it still going to look the same at council where we've got findings of fact and then we have an ordinance and that's for the annexation? And then we have another ordinance for the zoning? Because I'm just finally following that.
No process changes. And that's, that's something to really hit home, I think, is the, the changes might look substantial. There's, there's a lot of red lines there, but the primary purpose is just to clarify the existing process. No change to processes occurring with these red lines.
Thanks. Any other questions?
And when I was reading through the red line, I also noticed there's a lot of just clarification of language and modernization of language to bring it along to industry standard.
Very much so. And that, that'll be the goal moving forward. As you all know, we're moving forward with a fairly sizable code update project. And you'll see individual code updates come similar to this one from time to time that we see fit to come immediately instead of waiting for that code process or code update project to flesh out. But that's exactly right. That is the goal here is to really modernize our code, bring us up to industry standard and keep things as clear as possible. So.
Thank you very much. If there are any additional questions from council, I will hold a hearing on this item. Any public comment? Seeing none. Would someone make a motion?
Move to pass ordinance twenty-six forty-six on first reading as presented.
Second.
And that passes unanimously, moving us on to item nineteen, resolution twenty-two-three dash twenty-two, which is a resolution setting January second, twenty twenty-four, as the hearing date for the Blowers addition annexation. And more annexation. William Reese.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor, members of city council. Just to clarify your question on that last item with the whole, having to read a whole resolution and an ordinance and then another ordinance, that's a process that's outlined by the state constitution. So we will not be bringing any code changes in regards to that anytime soon.
I can handle that. We've got it down now on council. We're not changing the constitution. That's it.
So this application is another annexation application. Obviously, this is a different step in the process. Tonight on this one, you're voting on a resolution that would set the official hearing date, which we're proposing for January second. We do plan this to, plan to bring this to planning commission tomorrow. November's calendar happens to place city council and planning commission in the same week. Second reading would ideally occur on January sixteenth. This is, this is a proposed annexation of fifteen point two-two acres in the properties within the city's urban growth boundary, sewer service, and water service areas. This annexation consists of three properties and a sliver of right-of-way. And with all of these combined, they do meet the contiguity requirement. The surrounding area consists of RL Rural Living District, R five medium density slash manufactured housing district, excuse me, R six medium density slash manufactured housing district, I one light industrial district, which is the airport property, as well as areas outside of city limits. The applicant has requested RL with a minimum loss size of one acre for this annexation, which is, which is intended to provide for farms, ranches, and cluster development with open space and is designed to dovetail with allowed county residential densities. This here is the annexation flat showing the three properties that are proposed to be annexed. According to our land use chapter, this is shown as residential mixed density low and a little bit of employment center on the western side, right next to the airport. Like the other annexations, this is in growth area one, indicating existing or proximity to existing utilities. The applicant is requesting annexation in order to connect to city utilities. In summary, the application is in order and the property is eligible for annexation. Since this is over ten acres, an annexation impact report will be required. That will be submitted to the county at least twenty days before the official hearing. We do recommend approval of resolution twenty-two-three dash twenty-two, which will set January second as the official hearing date for the Blowers addition. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Any questions from council? Okay, this was just a resolution setting the hearing date. Is there any public comment on that? Seeing none. Would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt resolution twenty-two-three dash twenty-two as presented. I'll second that.
Thank you. Please vote. We missing one? Oh, there we go. It passes unanimously. Okay, moving on. Item twenty. Okay, we're getting past all the annexations. We'll move into some new stuff here. Rio Grande right-of-way and public works facility property purchase. This is council consideration of the purchase of sixteen acres near the intersection of Rio Grande Avenue and East Oak Grove Road at a purchase price of eight hundred thousand to acquire the rights of way necessary for the southern extension of Rio Grande Avenue and for use as the city's new public works facility. I am going to turn this over to our city engineer, Scott Murphy, and public works director, Jim Shad. They're both looking at each other. Who's going first?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think I'll start with the, the planning and our long-range planning and transportation piece and then turn it over to Jim for some of the details on the, on the public workshop. So included with the packet, I apologize, it's kind of hard to see at this scale, but is kind of a map of this southwestern quadrant of town and kind of speak up to what's led up to where we are now. Long range, obviously, the transportation needs of the city, we need something besides Townsend. Rio Grande has served as, Grand and Rio Grande jointly have served as kind of that western arterial first alternate north-south to Townsend. It stops at Rio Grande, where Rio Grande joins East Oak Grove right now by Stovers. Over the last six years, I think it's been, as part of sewer projects, as part of annexations, as part of land swap agreements, all kinds of various ways it's happened. But we have worked to secure, in support of that long-range need, all of the necessary rights of way for the Rio Grande extension, with the exception of the one we're talking about tonight. So kind of help orient everybody, this is target down here at the right side of the picture, which is the south end. You get into River Crossing Edition, which that secured the right-of-way there for the extension of Ogden and Rio Grande through the property. Unryan, they had a family, a fish lack to the city that the city helped with. And that kind of helped divvy up the land and secure the rights of way through there. Going north is the, what used to be the Adamson property was secured as part of a right-of-way swap with some land up on the Hogback. And then you get into Mitchell. So we've kind of always knew that the road was going to go through here, just waiting on the, kind of the timing elements of it. And did, you know, we, condemnation or eminent domain is an option, but we generally think, you know, knock on wood, I've never had to go there as part of a city project to date. We're generally able to work with landowners. And this is kind of why we have, we try and get these in the long-range planning hoppers. So when opportunities arise, we don't have to do it under a rushed eminent domain type scenario. So it's always kind of been on our radar for a decade, probably. Combine that with, we've been looking for a new public workshop facility. We're always looking for two birds with one stone. And especially on this parcel, it's a more impactful take. So if I zoom in here, you can see, I think there's six, five or six residential trailers that live on there. This is a county parcel owned by the Mitchell family. I think since the seventies or so, they've been renting to those tenants that have lived there. And so that's, you know, difficult thing to work around and for the owners and for the city. So that's why it's kind of waited until the timing was right. Since then, the, you know, they've kind of continued to have a lot of septic issues to where they would need to upgrade and come to city standards for a mobile home-style park. And for the six units, it's generally cost prohibitive to do so. So they kind of got to a point where is it time to sell the land? Where we had interest just beyond the right-of-way, kind of made it all come into play, or come into place to, I think, consider our, our offer as the city to purchase the land. So what's being proposed here is a fifteen point six acre larger parcel. And then there is also some right-of-way cleanup that is actually within the existing Rio Grande. They own some of that just from old, this corner is a really busy corner that has subdivisions that come from six different angles. So cleaning up some previous right-of-way within the existing road and then whatever's necessary to. necessary to kind of expand out in this corner. Between those two, it sums to about 16 acres, as outlined in the memo. So that kind of speaks to the drivers for the roadway and the public works facility we've talked about at length before, so I won't go too deep into it, but generally, the existing facility, it doesn't owe us much. It's had a good life, and because of all the constraints being up by the airport, there's not a lot of room for expansion. And so, you know, we've been looking for larger parcels. A key component of a facility of that type is it fits well with the surrounding areas. This area, we feel it's a really good fit. You have BLM, BOR, Forest Service, WAPA, Tri-State, all kind of these municipal, not municipal, government campuses around there. Makes for a good fit. Decent size, but also centrally located to be for convenience and response times of services, but also for accessibility to the public. So it hit on a lot of those things. It's a little bit of a challenging site to develop. We've got to relocate some irrigation, get some fill in there. But again, with enough time, and, you know, we're, get it in the hop early enough, we can kind of do those fills and do that site work as part of other projects when we are losing millings or something on a job. So you're not paying just to bring something in, we can actually get lower prices on other work to bring in fill and things of that sort. So just kind of getting into our longer-range plans. The purchase agreement itself, so we've entered into an agreement with Mitchell, this is essentially ratifying that. The general terms are we're buying vacant land, and so the owner is working to terminate leases on those, the trailers that are remaining. Sometimes those are so old that they can't be moved, so to not put that burden on to the owners, we've agreed that they can take them if they want, certainly, but anything that's left behind, we would abate and demolish as part of a follow-up city project. The closing, just to give time for all that, we didn't want to pressure anything, so we're set, we gave them six months from the kind of effective date of this agreement to close, and if they wanted to do earlier, we're certainly ready to. We can kind of adapt as needed, depending on how everything goes on the private side. The, and the kind of last piece was water rights, that usually comes up in land purchase agreements. So this land, as we understand it, has rights, not shares, so these are pre-compact rights off of the, or off of Dry Cedar Creek, essentially. I don't know if, that's the point of diversion, I don't know where the rights sit, but nonetheless, those are used by Mitchell, they continue to farm downstream of here. As a public works facility, our landscaping would be typically trees and shrubs, drip-type irrigation. We don't have a need for those, they were really important to the owner. We had no qualms at all about not transferring any water rights. Sometimes they say shares, you know, depending on the water company, you'll run with the land, and we don't think that applies here. Nonetheless, we're not interested in them, so whatever the previous property owner was entitled to, it's written in there that we don't claim title to any of that, they would just remain the benefactor of those rights. Going into the financials of it, so again, the purchase price is $800,000, so that includes the kind of the raw price of the land, plus some additional compensation to the owner to kind of help them facilitate moving, or whatever they need to do to kind of help the tenants with the lease terminations. The $800,000 will be funded, I think, primarily out of ARPA funds, I think there's $100,000 that was coming elsewhere. But Shane, you gave me the thumbs up, and we've got it all teed up and ready to go, because if approved, this would just go into escrow pending closing. And then I think I'll turn it over to Jim to talk about some of the projects slated for the, we've talked about these a little bit of budget, but slated for kind of the next year at the site.
Yeah, I'll speak a little bit about the facility and some of the work we've done, how it seems like over the last several years in researching this topic. It was, actually started even before I was with the city in looking at the facility and evaluating the site that we're on and other sites. It's really come into focus for me in the last couple of years of looking at our existing site and other options for purchasing property, finding how unique our need is, a large site near town is quite difficult to find, and we spent a lot of time reviewing and looking, and this site, you know, it was really fortunate that we were able to come across it. We've completed several different needs assessments, helping us to try and determine what it is that we actually need. I've toured a lot of other public works facilities and found that we're pretty unique here in how much we do all in one facility, in one location, and there's a lot of efficiencies and value in that, and so makes our site pretty unique as well, trying to find a property that where we fit in the neighborhood, like Scott mentioned, but also have the accessibility that we need to the city. So yeah, this is going to be a huge step forward in that and a big accomplishment. We have budgeted for in this coming year would be design of that facility, so we've done preliminary needs assessments and looking at square foot costs and things like that, but there's been no design work of any kind done yet. So we've budgeted for that in this coming year, and we would move forward with that here in the near future. Also, the site would require securing and clearing likely to, you know, through that design process, we want to make sure the site is secure. So we've also included that in our budget for what demo and abatement may need to be done, any clearing that we would need to do to secure the site. So all those things are ready to move forward in 2024.
And one kind of incidental to that, too, will be the extension of Rio Grande, so because this site needs to work with it horizontally, vertically, drainage, all of that, and then there's a couple of other drivers that are kind of putting pressure on the Rio Grande alignment, we just want to get the whole thing designed. So the budget does have design all the way down to Target, which would lend itself to, it's a really great candidate because of the greenfield construction nature of it for a federal, like a, one of those big, it used to be called Tiger, I don't know what they're called now, but you know, like a big $15 million federal grant, so we're hopeful that this would set us up for something like that, should it arise in the next five years as an opportunity. If not, you know, constructing in phases and just making sure that it all matches, you know. So makes sense to design the whole thing and not make sure, don't paint ourselves into a corner, so.
How long would that road be? It's pretty, would be a pretty expensive road to build.
Yeah, I think on the capital plan, and this was all dollars, like, you know, yesterday, since doubled. I think, I mean, it's pretty easily in excess of 15, possibly even $20 million by the time you do that road. It's a pretty substantial capital undertaking, but a perfect candidate for grants, because it's neighborhood connectivity, it's, you know, census-wise, it'd speak to a lot of the, you know, connectivity in disadvantaged neighborhoods into the infrastructure and the newer areas and stuff, so it would be a good candidate.
Okay. Thank you.
I think this is really exciting, because it also responds to our citizens survey, satisfaction survey, and one of the things that our citizens have mentioned was they want to see more work on connectivity and on traffic and on congestion, and this is a great opportunity to really kind of deal with a lot of that in a very, very positive way.
I think people will really like it, is what you're saying.
I think people will complain about it anyway.
Well.
But to like it in the long run.
I think one of the items, too, that we've discussed in the past, if we were to pick up a piece of property outside of town, it increases our fuel cost, and if it's on a highway, we have quite a few pieces of our equipment we cannot take and run down the state and federal highway, too.
Correct, yeah. One of the sites that we evaluated was north of town, off of the highway, basically, and yeah, it's quite difficult. We would have to trailer a lot of equipment, and we don't even have the equipment to do that now. It would change the way we operate a lot of what we do. It would change our response times and things like that, so yeah, transporting down a highway would make things much more difficult, which, again, is why access is so important. You know, again, reviewing this over the last couple of years, we've kind of really learned how important that is. Our existing site has good connection, we're able to access with equipment fairly easily, and that's really important. And this site here would offer that same thing.
And having a lot of our transportation as accessible for equipment also keeps our costs of operating down.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. The equipment, fuel, time would be extensive if we had to transport from a distance.
Kudos to the engineering department and the public works for finding this property, and I'm just glad that we're finally having a new home for the public works.
This has been a long time planning, so congratulations, you guys, good work. Okay, if there aren't any more questions or comments from council, I don't want to rush you, but I think we're done, then I would accept if there's any public comment about the motion to approve this purchase, and seeing no public comment would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the purchase of a 16.0-plus acres near the intersection of Rio Grande Avenue and East Oak Grove Road at a purchase price of $800,000 as presented, and to authorize the signature of the city manager or designee on any documents necessary to execute this transaction.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Please vote. And that passes unanimously, moving us on to finish out our agenda tonight with two action items, both regarding trash trucks. Okay, item 21, used trash truck purchase ratification. This is council consideration of the ratification of the purchase of a used 2019 Peterbilt refuse truck from Elliott Equipment in Commerce City, Colorado, for the total purchase price of $219,800, public works director, Jim Scheid. And I know you told us all about it at work session, but for the public, would you just recap that?
Definitely, yes. Actually, Shane, our fleet superintendent, told us all about it at work session, but I would be happy to review it. So yes, as you said, this is for a used refuse truck. We have had, actually ordered three of these trucks since 2021, and due to several delays, long story, I know we have spoke about it before, but basically, these trucks have been delayed and are expected for arrival next year. Some of the impacts that that's having on our existing fleet are it's causing our maintenance costs to go way up, we're seeing major failures. That's also an item on the agenda we'll talk about next, is a trash truck that had a complete failure. And so it's pushing us to research other opportunities to help remediate that, and what do we do with, we can't get the trucks here any faster, so what do we do? Well, we actually came across this opportunity with Elliott Equipment, they are a manufacturer of trash trucks, they sold a new truck to another city, and that city was trading in their old truck. And it just happens that truck is about four years old, which is a very good system, that's a system that we are trying to get to, where we are trading in trucks about five years, that would be a goal of ours to get to. And this truck that they're trading in is exactly what we intended to order originally in 2021, so it also aligned very well with our plans for our fleet. And time was sensitive on this, that truck we knew was not going to be available very long. There's a lot of cities in our situation that are looking for equipment, and so we requested that we could move on that purchase quickly. City management team and council was supportive of that, and so we have already placed a hole on that vehicle, it's on its way. Hopefully, we'll see it in the next couple of weeks, actually. It has been transported to Denver and is being checked out right now, basically, and should be to us relatively soon. So I thank you for allowing us to speed up that process, one, to secure it, but also to get it here quickly. So that is going well, and should be seeing it soon. The good news on this, actually, it lines up very well, again, with our replacement schedule and with our budget. This was budgeted for in 2022, was part of one of the orders that we placed, but because those have become delayed by so much, we can actually, when those arrive, we can use them for the replacements of this year and next year, rather than using them for an additional truck in 2022. And it lines up well with our replacement schedule moving forward, we can actually schedule this truck for replacement in 2025, which again, lines up very well with the vision of trying to replace trucks on a five-to-six-year replacement schedule. So this purchase is well below the amount we budgeted in 2022, which has carried over in the fleet fund since the time it was budgeted. It is, we had budgeted $350,000, this purchase is $219,000, leaves us about $130,000 under budget, and I would recommend we put that in our fleet fund to allow, to assist with the replacement of that truck in a couple of years. So all around, good news.
Sounds great. Sounds like you guys have been scrambling over trash trucks for a couple of years. We're taking the old city logo off of wherever it was before, are we going to confuse residents with a whole different city logo trash truck going around town?
Yeah, I believe it was Iowa, so.
That would be very confusing.
It's a ways, yeah.
Any other questions from council?
Yeah.
Okay, then, public comment? Anyone have any public comment about us buying a used trash truck? Okay, how about a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the ratification of the purchase of a used Peterbilt refuse truck from Elliott Equipment in Commerce City, Colorado, for the total purchase price of $219,800 as presented.
Second.
Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Okay, our last item for action, item 22, a trash truck repair ratification, as our trash trucks keep getting older and breaking down. This is consideration of the ratification of an emergency repair to a trash and recycle refuse truck for a complete engine replacement performed by Next Tran Truck Center in Fruta, Colorado, in the amount of $42,763. I'll turn it over to you for an explanation, Jim, but it's kind of self-explanatory.
It is. I have good news on this one as well, though.
Okay, let's hear it.
So yeah, same division, different truck, but speaking to this one, and the process that we were allowed to go through with moving quickly on this repair because of necessity of this truck, the repair's already complete, and this truck has been back in operation already this week. So I'd just say thank you for allowing us to move forward that process to the city manager and to city council for recognizing the critical nature of this vehicle and allowing us to get it repaired quickly. And Next Tran Truck Center in Fruta did a great job, it's a quick turnaround, and the truck is back at work, and relieving some of that pressure that it puts on our other trucks for having to make up for that lost vehicle, especially on a holiday week, which this happens to be a holiday week, so having it back, it was just in time. We use all of our trucks on holiday weeks, so yeah, it was definitely needed and just in time, so thank you.
Thank you very much. So you mentioned this is a holiday week, because the city offices are closed on Thursdays. Can you explain how that is affecting the trash and/or recycle schedule for folks? Is it?
It is. I question that quickly, because actually, Veterans Day was one that doesn't affect our recycle schedule.
Okay.
I'm questioning that right, just real quick, but on a regular holiday week, I would say that we compress our pickup schedule from what would be four days into three days, and we are doing that for trash, but not for recycle this week.
Okay.
Because of the fact that we would then have to pick up recycle on Friday, anyway.
Okay.
So normally, or any other holiday week, yeah, it compresses all of our trash and recycle pickup into three days.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, any public comment on this ratification of emergency repair? Seeing none.
I move to approve the ratification of an emergency repair to a trash and recycle refuse truck by Next Tran Truck Center in Fruta, Colorado, for an amount of $42,763 as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Please vote. And that passes unanimously. So that was our last action item. So now we wrap up all of our council meetings with a couple opportunities for staff to fill us in on anything that wasn't an agenda item for action, but an item that they think we need to know about and/or the public needs to know about, which included a request from me for an update about leaf collection.
I have an update for you.
Okay.
So yeah, I can kind of give an update on how this works and what people can expect. So we do our annual leaf cleanup event, this time every year. It will officially start next week, November 13th through December 17th, or to December 7th, sorry. We have actually started picking up leaf bags already, so as people have been sending them out, and I happen to have crews driving by the area, they'll pick up bags now, we have been already, but we will formally begin our process of getting throughout every street in town starting next week. So how it works is residents are able to bag their own leaves and leave them out near the curb, and our public works crews will pick up those bags at no cost. We ask that everybody uses clear bags, we sell the clear bags to the public. We ask that because sometimes some will put trash in the bags, or rocks, or... We, we ask that because sometimes some will put trash in the bags or rocks or other things that can be difficult to pick up and also are not good for where we take the leaves to, and I'll explain that as well. So we ask for clear bags and that's why if you don't have clear bags or you ran out of clear bags, we will still pick up your leaves. So if they are in black bags, we'll pick them up. But we ask nicely that they're in clear bags. What do we do with the leaves? We donate them. So we, as a goal of ours, to give all of them away. We don't want to pay to haul them to a disposal site, which is most likely going to be in Olathe, where we take all of our green waste, too. It costs money and time for us to do that. So we look for farmers in the area that want to use them as tillage or other residents that may want leaves for gardening, whatever, anything they would like. And we will deliver them. So because we've, we would have to take them to Olathe, as long as it's a shorter distance than that, we would take them to, most of them go to a farmer. And it kind of changes year over year, but there are several on our list that, that ask for several loads of these leaves to be delivered and we take them to their farm, we, we drop them off and then they spread them on their own properties and use them as tillage. And so, yeah, we've been successful in being able to donate all of them last several years that I, that I know of. And I think this year's already going well as far as that.
Fantastic.
Yep.
Any questions about leaf pickup? Thanks for that update. Any other staff updates about any items that council or the public needs to be aware of that were not action items tonight? Okay, good deal. How about? All of us. So any updates from council, anything council wants to bring forward today? Okay, then I will just, go ahead.
One thing, if anybody ever has a question about what a nimble, responsive government looks like, look around this room. Our staff is the very definition of nimble, responsive, and compassionate city government.
They're good.
I think you guys are awesome. Thank you for all the hard work you do. You make our jobs easy.
Yeah, thank you for giving us all the good information so we can sit up here and make good decisions. I'm going to circle back to the proclamation I didn't read. I am going to hold on to it until our next meeting on the off chance that someone from the community foundation would come and accept it. It's much more fun to read a proclamation if there's folks here. Is that you?
No.
Oh, good. Oh, my gosh, I thought, oh my, oh my gosh, I thought maybe you're sitting here this whole time and I missed you at the beginning of the meeting for the community foundation proclamation. Okay.
I was just wondering if I could just say something?
No, the public comment is only at the beginning, but we're all going to stay here afterwards. So if you have a question or you want to talk to people, we'll all be here. We don't automatically disappear when I adjourn us. So we'd love to talk to you after the meeting. And that being said, motion to adjourn.
So good.
We are adjourned. What do you want to talk to us about?
No, you want, I was just gonna, I sat here for this whole meeting.
You missed the point.